Good evening and welcome to the Brockton School Committee Finance Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 20, 2025. Time is 6:03. We are located at the George Rom Little Theater at Brockton High School, 470 Forest Avenue, Brockton, Mass. 0230201. This meeting will be held and will be accessible via the public, via Comcast Channel 8 and 107 HD version, and online via this link, www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. I will call this meeting to order by establishing a quorum. Mrs. Oliver?
Here.
Mrs. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
And myself, Tony Rodriguez, as the Chair President and the Superintendent, Dr. Tigliani, and Mrs. Sullivan and Mr. Gomes are not in attendance at the moment. And we will proceed with the presentation of the FY26 budget by the Superintendent. It was all yours.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us tonight and for tuning in from home. So I am honored to be able to present you with the second presentation of our budget for this, for FY26. So we did previously present the budget at a Finance Subcommittee meeting, and tonight I would like to revisit the budget. So what we have done since the last meeting and now is I know several of you had questions during that meeting that we were able to respond to. Some, I let you know that we would get back to you on them, and so in the meantime, I have been communicating with you to provide you your answers. Also, I know I've been meeting with some of you one-on-one just to talk through some of your questions, but also I wanted to take this opportunity to present those questions that we thought may be helpful for the entire community to know. So rather than presenting the entire presentation again, I will just be revisiting those questions. So one of the questions that was asked is if there was funding available listed under the Grants Department line item. And the answer to that is that the only expense in the Grants Office is for funding for the Director of Grants position, which is actually paid by a revolving grant. So this position falls under the Finance Department. Grants are approved by school committee via a separate formal process that we do every time we meet. And you all did receive a new budget book today that not only reflects some of the feedback that you gave, but some of the questions you may have had and even some of the errors that we caught. So in the, one of the cover pages, you'll actually see what some of the changes are that we made. So we showed explicitly on page this, we changed this amount to this amount, so that you could see where we made changes. And this was one area where we had actually included a Grants page that said zero dollars, and so we deleted that page since it's included in another office and in our revolving funds. Another question that was asked is, does the district employ any athletic trainers and is there a plan to budget additional athletic trainer positions? So we do contract athletic trainer services with Brockton Signature Healthcare, and with the contract, we are never without a trainer at a game, and we don't have to figure out what to do last minute in the case that one calls in sick. I know there has been some conversation in this area about whether or not we should have our own as well on staff, but for now, this is our current plan, which has been successful for now. But because this question came up, I will be continuing to discuss it with our Director of Athletics and our Director of Operations to see if this is something we would like to change moving forward, but that's why you don't see it in the FY26 budget. Is the facility's overtime budget due to staffing vacancies and/or increased responsibilities? So the proposed overtime budget is due to positions that we were unable to hire for last year and subsequently did not have the funds to hire for because of the spending freeze. Despite being able to add back six of the custodial positions in this budget to decrease overtime costs, the proposed overtime allocation does remain level funded to allow for mid-year adjustments as needed. So we have added in additional positions that we're hopeful to hire for, but in the case that we don't have those positions or unable to hire for them, we wanted to make sure that we had accounted for the costs of overtime. And so there would, will be a mid-year reallocation at some point of whether it's the mid-year or whether it's the overtime costs or the custodial position costs. Another question that came up is, has analysis been conducted to determine whether leasing or purchasing laptops for students and educators is the most fiscally conservative? So I did check in with our Director of Technology, Dan Beejent, and he provided several different points for why we decided to purchase. First, there was no price discount on the devices as we use them for four-plus years, and then returning them was not advantageous to the provider. So them getting back at that point without wear and tear wasn't really something that they, you know, were interested in because they couldn't effectively be used at that point. There's also an interest rate baked into a lease, which effectively actually makes it more expensive to lease than to purchase the devices outright. If we were to lease for a shorter period, so three years, and return the devices to the provider, at the end of the lease, the number of devices that go lost, stolen, damaged, or beyond repair becomes problematic because any cost savings that we may have gotten on a short-term lease would most likely be negated by any, you know, laptops that were no longer able to be used or weren't being returned. So that is why at this point in time, we have chosen to purchase. However, that, again, since that is a question that has come up, we will certainly re-explore over the coming year to see if that is the most fiscally prudent way to go. Another question that was asked is, is insurance for our bus fleet and district vehicles independently contracted, or is it part of a broader citywide policy that includes schools? So BPS actually does have its own vehicle insurance that covers buses, school police vehicles, facilities, school meal vehicles, and IT vehicles. Due to an anticipated increase in insurance costs, we will be requesting additional quotes in an effort to obtain the most cost-effective rates, and we are in conversation with the city about what it may look like to combine insurance policies, if that is a possibility. So those were some of the questions that had come up, but again, this is an ongoing dialogue, so if there are further questions that come up through conversations with all of you at the next meeting, I will certainly make sure that those answers are communicated to the community as well. So one thing, oh, whoops. Oh, I was on the wrong one, sorry. I missed one. Okay. Another one, are we planning on filing, filling the project manager position or keeping it managing bids and construction work district-wide? So we did have a project manager position in previous years, but that was a vacancy in the last few years, and we did not budget it for the FY26 budget. So since several of our invitations for formal bids have been completed with several in queue, we only need to obtain project management services when required by law for specified construction projects, and oftentimes, for example, some of our bigger projects, we actually hire OPMs. So at this point in time, we don't believe that we need a project manager on staff. Also, a question that came up, are we pursuing reimbursement or other recourse from in-force 911 service? So services for this vendor are not budgeted for FY26. We will be meeting with this particular vendor to explore whether we can receive a reimbursement and to confirm non-renewal of services. Sorry, this, oh, gosh, I'm all over the place. This is, I should probably wear my glasses so I can see the slides myself. All right, so as we are thinking about the future, because we're still working on this budget and making sure it is the best it can possibly be, but we're already looking ahead at what we would like to do in next year's budget. And so some of our priorities for the budget moving forward, because this is an ongoing process, is the first thing we'll be striving for is greater budget accuracy. We have certainly achieved that in this budget, but we would like to be even more accurate and specific. So we would like to continue to improve and drill down on the budget chart of accounts to more accurately reflect the services and supplies budgeted for each budget line item. This includes disaggregating all the positions so that they are reflected individually in school and department budgets. So while right now you actually see, whereas you may not have before, how many FTEs there are in each different school, whereas before it was bundled together, we would like to drill down even further. Budget collaboratives. So we would like to bolster our budget meetings to continue to include a multidisciplinary team approach to intentionally, more intentionally, plan our budgets. So this would include the school-based team as well as relying on enrollment projections and compiling key performance indicators. So we do want to have some key performance indicators that we are keeping in mind so that we can measure how effective our budget is. And then finally, we want to empower our leaders. So we want to explore more opportunities to expand budget responsibilities to our school leaders, who are best suited to determine the budget for their respective school communities, such as adding a budget for field trips. Ownership of the budget does empower our leaders and supports to implement their academic vision for their school. And then a final one, just as we're thinking about broadly improving our budget for the next year, you know, many of these, the budget collaboratives and empowering leaders are all with the mindset of trying to get more stakeholder input. And so that doesn't just stop at our school leaders. We would like to, over the years, start to expand more greatly and get community input, get input from our DPACs, get input from our student advisory councils. So in my last district, this was something we were able to achieve by, you know, my last year there, it is a work in progress, but a budget really should be a community-wide effort, especially once we reach the level of accuracy that we want in our budget. And then always want to just hearken back to our strategic objectives and priorities. These are, again, what we are striving for in our budget. So as I mentioned last time, when we were thinking about what the investments were that we wanted to make, we kept our strategic priorities in mind. And so at this time, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent, for that update. If the clerk can just reflect the minutes that Mr. Gomes did it arrive at, I think it was 6:08, if that could reflect the minutes, six, it's not 6:05, it's 6:08. Now I'll open up the floor to the members for any questions relative to the presentation of Superintendent, Mrs. Oliver, followed by Mr. Sullivan.
Not so much a question, just statement. I do like the idea of empowering the leaders, especially in different schools. I think that's a great idea, especially allowing the PAC members and all the students to basically decide, like, field trips and exactly how each, the money can be spent and, like, they have different ideas, like events, dances, and sports, and after-school program. I think that is a great idea, and it's about time. I do like that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to be sure, there is nobody, no salaries being paid on the grants?
So I had emailed you today the list of positions that are paid off grants, and also in the back of your book where there are is the list of salaries, another way to, so I sorted them all for you and just sent you the list of just those that are paid off grants. But if you want to check to see which ones are paid off grants in Section 2, when you're looking at the list, if you look under the org code, any positions that do not start with a zero or a one, so zero or one means they're funded through our general fund. Anything else, like a two or a five, is funded through grants. The only exception to that is Code 25009000, which, and you'll see right next to it, those are our cafeteria workers. So those are the only ones who are not. So when we were, when I looked back and sent that list, it had about 200, and again, that's not full positions, 200 people, I would say, who had been paid off grants, because it includes everything from salaries to stipends.
I know some of them are federal grants, like the tier one and two?
Yes, so another thing that, you know, is important to us is when we are funding positions on grants, we generally focus on our entitlement grants, our IDEA, our Title I, Title III. We want to make sure they are long-term grants. When we receive competitive grants, we are more reluctant to fund positions on them, so we focus more on services and initiatives, because again, when a grant ends, then we would have to eliminate a position. So the positions that are currently funded off grants are funded off our longer-term entitlement grants.
In other words, so it's clear that Title I grants does not fund the teacher?
It can, it absolutely can.
If it stops, the teacher's gone as well?
So if we were to lose federal or state dollars that we have always received, that would be something we would have to revisit.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mrs. Azak?
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. I know we touched base earlier, and thank you for covering some of those questions that I had. So just a couple of things. I'm not sure if this was already brought up, but I'll, right here, we have, for example, one of the departments had a million dollars custodian overtime, a million dollars. Is it something that we should be looking at maybe adding positions? Would we be saving money by adding positions rather than a million dollars in overtime?
Yes, so that is a position where we did have to use a lot of overtime this year because we were unable to hire for those positions subsequent, previously, and we didn't have the funds to hire for them, and there was a hiring freeze. So we have added back six of those custodial positions in this budget. However, right now, we have kept the overtime costs level funded, so we've kept that line item there as is, just because we're unsure how many custodians we'll be able to hire. So there will be a mid-year transfer at some point, where we're either transferring out of the overtime line, hopefully, because we've been able to get more custodians, or if we still have vacancies, then we may be transferring out of the custodial line.
Perfect, and I do apologize, I should have asked this before. So I have two questions, and one of them is, I know we've run into this before, the Verizon wireless, and I know at one point, I think it's before you came on, they were just making sure that anyone that did have a cellphone, that were using the cellphones, if they weren't, then we were shutting those phones off. I just want to make sure that, how many employees is that, and are those phones being used, and if they're not, are we shutting them off? Rather than, because some people might have them and they're just not using them. But I would just, I should have mentioned that earlier, I do apologize. But that was just one question. Then the other thing is, is I get it, but this day and age, where technology, everything's just mostly technology, and we're not really using a lot of paper, and I'm just looking at some of these copy supplies, copy rental fees, leases, I mean, it's over a million dollars, which is insane, and that's just for the copier leases. And I'm sure, I'm sure you and your team are looking into that, it's just, as we, as we move forward, it's just, we gotta, I just don't want to be, toner supplies, and I know, you know, the vice chair, at one point, we had a few of us were chatting, I think with the previous CFO, months back, and we were like, why don't we just buy supplies, and then when the schools need it, they get the supplies from us, and then we can cut, cut down on supplies, rather than just packing up your shelves with supplies that you're not using, see what we have, things like that. So, and one of them would be, I know that the toners, as they need them, they go to the schools, but just these copier lease fees are just...
And we've actually pulled these down quite a bit, so earlier this school year, I think we had three different copier leases, or we had leases with several different vendors. So one of the things that the interim CFO, Patricia Boyer, brought to my attention is that this obviously wasn't very fiscally appropriate, considering we're, we have multiple vendors providing these copiers, and then if you pull usage, not all of them were being used. And so we did pare that down, and we did have copiers that were, you know, taken back because we were trying to at least streamline and have just one vendor. So that was, you know, step one, and there were certainly, you know, complaints, because folks rely on their printers and their copiers, but we at least wanted to streamline. I do agree, and that was certainly an initiative that I have taken on before in my role of moving to more centralized printing, where we had machines where you would send your copies from your computer, you'd scan your ID card, they would come out when you were there, and that is a much more, that, you know, fiscally conservative way to approach it. That being said, it does come at a cost, right? And it comes at a cost of convenience for teachers, it comes at a cost to those who are on the ground working with students. So it is something we are striving towards, but I do just want to, you know, mention, because I learned it the hard way in my last district, that, you know, taking away the copiers can be catastrophic, and so we would want to make sure that we are working with our school building leaders, our staff, to make sure that we are doing it thoughtfully. As for individual printers too, same sort of thing, but when folks get used to having those in their classrooms, again, it's hard to sort of part with that convenience, but that is something we will be looking for into the future, and I think that's a conversation we're having directly with school leaders and staff, because when you look at the overall cost, to your point, while, you know, it may be convenient on one end, it could fund positions on the other, but I think it's important to have that dialogue with the staff.
Thank you. And then my last question is, and I apologize, the last meeting, I was, I was not in attendance, so if you covered this, I apologize for having to repeat it. So the enforced 911, it's a program we've had for a few years, and we just never utilized it. So are we not, we're not going to pay that 250?
So we have already incurred costs, and so what we are doing is, we are not going to, we are going to be discontinuing that contract and then trying to recoup the costs.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure if I'm getting it confused with a different program. There was one that, that was still working on, this is before you came on, and if the vice chair can chime in, I know that they were, it was like 40,000 a year, 38,000, is that the enforced 911 program I'm thinking of?
Correct.
Where they came, did a presentation, and it just never launched. So I just want to make sure, is that, okay?
I can, I can certainly get back to you on...
I don't think it ever launched.
I think there was a change of ownership or something to that nature.
Okay.
Superintendent's well aware of it, so she's on top of it.
No, definitely, definitely, again. I appreciate it, thank you. Oh, and Superintendent, one last question. So I saw on here, let me find it, it was vehicles, IT vehicles, facility vehicles, it was $170,000. Let me find it. Of course, I'm not going to find it. It was around 170, oh, insurance. Can we get a breakdown as to, I know we discussed this earlier about insurance, insurance policies, I'm sure we can probably get more competitive rates, rather than stay with who we've been with over the years, but I know we discussed it earlier, so I appreciate you addressing that, if we can look into just seeing if our rates are going up, how high are they going up year after year?
Okay.
And why are they going up? Is it accidents, you know, what's, what's happening? So that can, I don't need that information right away, but we could always follow up after this is all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Azak. Any further questions by any of the committee members, comments?
I apologize, one last question. So on the first page, so when this goes before the council, if we could, like, for example, some of them might not know, when you look at elementary school, on average, the elementary school budget for each individual school, they're going to wonder why does Davis, even though it says Davis K through eight, it's, it's because it's, it's a, can we put the number of students? Just ballpark idea to show them that this is why some schools are getting more funding than other schools, because some schools have 700, 800 kids compared to other schools that might have five?
Absolutely. That detail is in the individual pages for schools.
Perfect, okay.
But if you'd like us to include it on the cover page...
No, if it's in the, if it's in the individual pages, that's just when we go before City Council, just so they can see, that's why some of the schools are getting a little more. They are larger, and that's why they need more staff on hand, because they do have more, more students.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions by any of the members? Mr. Gomes, no, nobody? Just go right to Mr. Sullivan.
Just one, on the, this old book is outdated now? Just forget about it?
You can, we can even take it back if you don't want to have to deal with it.
You know.
I'm happy to take it back.
Thank you. The same cover?
It is, it is, but there is a date on this one, so that, for those of you who wanted to keep both, you could at least distinguish, so this one at least, the new one says May 20th on it.
Okay, thank you.
My own few questions, I know I, you know, we've met specifically on the mentoring side.
So we actually did add two mentors...
Thank you.
...that we did not have in the earlier book.
Appreciate that, and then also, there was just, you know, out of, you know, like, safety and security, assigning security specialists to the Champion High School.
Yes, so we budgeted for 24 last year, we, I think the most we had was 15, 16, which is about where we are right now that are all at the high school. Our goal for next year is to hire additional ones that will be placed at our other schools.
Thank you, appreciate that. And the other thing, I know we, we held off a little bit, and hopefully we can sit down the schedule, is having the attendance department making a presentation, you know, relative to some of our attendance records. I think there needs to be some addressing in that area of position, I don't think, I believe we have just, what, three, no, four?
So we have four.
Four, but I think when it comes to that department in whole, there's a linguistic barrier, specifically our Haitian population and also McKay-Verdian population, making sure that we have some linguistics in there. And I know you probably don't have the details in this, when we, when we're looking at this, like, how many actual educators, do we have, like, a strong number relative to where we were last year that we're adding this year?
Yes, we do.
I mean, if you don't have it now, it's okay, like, you can send that later on, just, just to see, you know, the amount of vacancies that we had, like, where we are relative to what we're hiring, making sure that we don't have classrooms that are covered by substitutes.
So yes, we, as you know, because there was a, I often sent updates on how, how many vacancies we had last year, we were sort of chipping away at it throughout the year. I think at this time, all in, we have, I don't want to say it, I think it's something like 239 that includes those educators that may also be on emergency licenses or on waivers. That's not to say that they won't be back, but we do have to make sure that we're following up with them and posting their positions. And then we have added a number of positions that include, that are in the budget, and I can get you a breakdown, a copy of the breakdown for those that include, you know, team chairs, pair professionals for city resource room, or for other additions that we're making, MSN teachers, you know, floating nurses, so we do have a number of positions that we have added for the upcoming year to meet some of our growing needs.
Thank you, thank you. And the next one, I know we had a security audit done by the Ed Davis Group, and then we also had Lieutenant Banaka, who did an assessment, and he came up that the size of our district, we need to have a minimum of 18 officers. I'm just, are we shooting for that 18, because I've only seen a reflection of minus two for 16?
16 is in there. We could certainly budget for 18, we're hoping to get to 16, I think right now, we're, you know, we're so far from that. And, and it's not a position even that is as easy to hire for because of the process that has to, so I think we have two that we know are in queue right now. So we could have budgeted for 18, but most likely, we're not going to get that for this school year. One of the things we are working on with the Police Department is sort of nailing down kind of what a hiring protocol can look like, especially now that we have sort of broadened some of the requirements, like residency preferred, but we're working with the Police Department on what does that, what does the hiring process, what should it look like now, especially since there are the greater requirements for post? There are, you know, we do have some, and at the end of the day, you know, the, the chief needs to agree to grant them police powers, so it's not helpful for us to hire someone if it's not, if they're... someone if it's not, if they're not ultimately going to be approved.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you for following up on those requests. Any members follow-up questions? Remember, this is net and non-net, so I've only heard net spending, Mr. Gomes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. T. I know we met earlier, and you did answer most of my questions. There's a few things I just wanted to bring up. One was the, I was just looking for clarification on the Sped Summer School Medical Therapeutic Day. Is here, if he could shed some light as far as that line item goes, that would be great. That's on page 16.
Good evening. Mr. Gomes, I asked to repeat the question.
Yes, I was just curious, there's, so under PLOF, we have a line item for, it says med therapeutic, summer school medical therapeutic. I was just curious, because there's not much description that got off. What, what does that cover? What does, does that entail?
Doc, can you just introduce yourself for the public?
Of course, sure. Hi, everybody, I'm Dr. Jamie LaBilua. I am your assistant, sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Dr. Jamie LaBilua, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Unified Student Services for the Brockton Public Schools. So two things, the summer reference, PLOF houses the elementary summer programs for the district. So embedded in their budget would be, medical therapeutic would include nurses or potential contractors, or individual related service providers who would perform either medical or therapeutic supports for the students enrolled in, in the program.
And it's just for the summer?
It is, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That, that was me. The other thing that I was also, I brought up to Dr. Tejillan, it was the Under Technology Support Office, the overtime for school committee meetings for IT?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we had a conversation about this, because I was curious, I know BCA does a good portion of the setup and things like that, but also we have other folks that could perform some of these jobs in order to cut down on costs as far as overtime goes.
So we do, yes, we, so we do have also internal staff that support these meetings, and that is where the overtime goes. We do actually have, and again, this is part of negotiations, we will, we are trying to again, think about how to save money, so thinking about potentially having flex schedules, again, that is all subject to negotiations. But then we also do have non-union staff, and so to, to your point, that is also something we could explore as far as ensuring that these meetings are covered. So we have a couple of different ways to, to think about this moving forward.
I think that's all the questions I have, you have already cleared the, the other ones. I just want to say thank you, I appreciate it, you taking the time, not just now, but to meet with us and go over our questions, concerns, and what we view as priority as far as, you know, our school district, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions by any of the members? Mrs. Azak?
I didn't get a chance to address this, so I wasn't present at your first presentation of the budget, and I just wanted to say thank you, because as, as I've been flipping through this for the past couple of weeks, very thorough, answers a lot of questions before I need to even ask you the questions. So I just want to thank you and your team, because it's been a while since we received anything this informative. So compared to what we've had in the past maybe year and a half, almost two years, this is the first time I've actually really seen a decent budget book that really breaks everything down for us. So, and again, once going before the city council, I mean, this should also help them, you know, understand our budget and, and all the departments that we have. So I didn't get a chance to thank you and your team, but thank you. I really appreciate all the hard work that went into this, and, and thank you.
Any follow-up questions, concerns? Again, thank you Superintendent, your team, Sharon, the superintendent's Trish, Kim, your office, this is, you know, as Mrs. Azak said, something that's real deep diving, constructing a, a budget where something really didn't exist from scratch is tremendous work. And the, you know, I, I am going to be the biggest cheerleader in the room, is that the committee vetted out a wonderful Superintendent yourself, making sure we moved the, the district forward. We can always look back at the past, but we're just looking forward to the future. So thank you very much for this, and I'll follow up with any more questions that I dig up through this nice detailed book moving forward. With that being said, do we have any other business to conduct?
If I may.
I'm Superintendent, the floor is yours.
I just want to say that, you know, I'm the facilitator, but the people who are doing the work are the incredible team that I have, so I just want to thank many of them who are in the room tonight or watching at home, but this sincerely has been a team effort. It has been an ongoing effort, it has been painstaking, and I just really appreciate all of the, the work that everybody has put into it and continues to put into it. When you all send me questions, I'm obviously not the one who's answering about the number of IEPs and the number of 504s. I'm forwarding those questions along to this amazing team, and they are the ones who are able to provide that information and that specific data. So I just want to thank this incredible team.
Thank you, appreciate that, and I second that. Wonderful, wonderful, we're in a, we're in a great point in time for BPS. That being said, our next scheduled FINCON meeting will be on the 29th, which will start 6:00 PM, am I saying right, 6:00, right? Anyway, it's going to be on the 29th, where we'll have our public comment, if any of the committees have anything to, for the budget, and then we'll take our formal vote, and that'll be a special. Mr. Gomes?
Just a heads up, I won't be here. I'll try to join virtually, but if that's not possible, I'll let you guys know.
Thank you. Duly noted. Mrs. Azak?
Thank you. Just to let this, I spoke with the Superintendent earlier, I hadn't mentioned it to the committee, but I will be at my niece's graduation from college that day, so I will do my best, and I'll talk to our attorneys if there's any other way that I can express my support with the final product. You know, I'll do my best if I can, try to zoom in, given that I am at an event that got to be there for the college kids, for their graduation, lifetime memories. But, um, thank you.
Thank you. Being said, no other business, I entertain a motion to adjourn our FINCON meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion was being by Mr. Gomes, properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan, a show of hands. Unanimous, meeting adjourned.